Can you hear me from here?
Yeah.
But can you hear me?
You can hear me, right?
Okay, yeah.
Let me hang up the phone, make sure we can hear each other.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so let me play it. Just tell me if you can, if I should raise it or it's a good sound. Okay, let me put it. And I'm gonna put it full screen.
I'm Ryan Seeley, Director of Finance for the Stanford Public Schools.
So this sound is not too loud?
Before you take part.
Okay. Wait, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Oh my God. No, it's fine. It's fine. It's for some reason though, it's coming out of my computer and not my soundbar. I must have
Oh.
ten times today, depending on whether it's Zoom or GoToMeeting or whatever. I'm so over it now.
Okay, great. As long as it's a good sound, so that's okay.
Actually, wait one second. Let me try to put it on my, um, I really don't like it coming out of my computer because my computer's closed.
Oh.
Okay, where's my soundbar?
That happens to me too when I use the work laptop.
Okay, talk to me again now.
Can you hear me?
I don't hear you if you're talking to me.
I am.
Damn it. Something's wrong with my soundbar. Alright. Alright, talk to me again.
You hear me?
Yeah, yeah. It's so strange. Now it's coming out even though I give up. Okay, put the, um, put the video on. Let me just hear it from this perspective.
Okay.
Your listening sessions. We wanted to give you an overview.
Good. It's not too loud, right?
Yep, it's fine. Perfect.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna stop my video but I'm gonna stay connected.
Okay.
Alright, I'll see you in a bit.
Okay, bye-bye.
We're going to give everyone a few more minutes, maybe about a minute and a half, and then we'll go ahead and get started. We appreciate everyone who's joined thus far. I think we'll go ahead and get started. For those who do not recognize me, I am Temu Lucero, Superintendent of Stanford Public Schools. Welcome to our first of three listening sessions. This one is focused on our staff, our teachers, and our administrators, giving you an opportunity to share some of your ideas related to the budget. As you may have recalled in the past, we have had opportunities for people to come in as smaller groups as a budget advisory group to talk to the superintendent about the budget. And we decided this year, after all the times that we've gotten together over the last 12 months, to talk about the budget with our major cut that we had last year, that it might be a good idea to listen to some of your ideas actually as we're creating the budget. So, sitting in front of you are the members of the superintendent's cabinet, and each of them are going to take just a moment to introduce themselves and just to give you a sense of what part of the budget that they spend the most time working on. And then we are going to watch a small video that was put together by our new Director of Finance, Ryan Feeley, and that is going to give you a sense of the process the budget goes through and how you can really take the budget book and understand it a little better. And then it'll be time for us to hear from you. So, I will get us started. Chris, if you want to unmute yourself and just give us a little bit of an introduction?
Sure. Evening, everybody. My name's Chris Sols. I'm the interim Executive Director of Human Resources. As for the budget, we've spent a lot of work so far this year on working on our issues and kind of reinforcing our needs there. And we want to make sure that we continue with with that program. So, we're looking at the viability financially for that to continue. And we're also looking to shore up the staffing here in HR.
Thank you. Amy Veldotti, do you want to talk to us about your major areas that you focused on in the budget this year?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Amy Veldotti. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. So, as my title speaks to, I'm focused mostly on things that pertain to curriculum instruction and assessment, and that's where we've been making decisions regarding programming and also some staffing to really take a deep dive in looking at our curriculum and our assessment structure that we have in the district K-12. I'm sure it's not a surprise to anyone on this call that we have curriculum areas that we have not looked at in a very long time and really need to do so. So, that's really where my department has been focusing their time in prioritizing the work around curriculum and assessment.
Thank you. And then we'll go on to Olympia Della Flora, who is our Associate Superintendent for School Development.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I have many of the buckets that do not fit into the other associate superintendent's areas, but some of the areas that I have been looking at that fall under me include summer school. And so, we've been thinking about what we need to plan for due to the impact of COVID as we're thinking about what we're planning for the summer, also family and community engagement, and what supports that we will be offering through our families that we need to improve upon, as well as various community partnerships that we have. I also oversee the athletics budget and also research and development, as well as several of the schools. So, my main focus is really how we are going to build into the budget some of the supports that our students and our families and our staff will need.
Thank you. We'll jump over to Dr. Fernandez.
Everyone, Michael Fernandez. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Intervention and Student Support. In that role, I oversee special education and related services. The related services being speech and language therapy. Also oversee our contracted services for occupational therapy and physical therapy. We've also, as you might know, also have now BCBA services for students with behavioral challenges and autism. As far as student support services, that also falls under my department. Oversee our school social workers and school psychologists in that role and servicing many of our students, both special ed and non-special ed. And then also this past year or two years now overseeing transportation and working closely with our transportation director in developing our transportation budget, as well as technology and overseeing the rollout of the one-to-one technology initiative that we've had the past year. Really primarily focused on the hardware, the Chromebooks and laptops at the high school, also the Wi-Fi connectivity, the Kijit hotspots that we've purchased, as well as our partnership with the state and Optimum Altice to try to get broadband internet into the homes of our families. As you know, special education makes up a significant part of our budget. It's an area that obviously is very important, but also costly. And while we try to manage costs, we really ultimately try to provide quality programs that meet the needs of all of our families and students. So, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Michael. And I'll just have Sharon introduce herself. She was a huge part of putting this all together. So, we'll jump over to her just to introduce herself and let us know what she does with the district.
Hi, I'm Sharon Beadle, Public Affairs Officer. And so, you get lots of communications from me. And although my portion of the budget is very small, I do utilize parts of the budget that others give me. Sort of the technology budget comes in handy with our website and our broadcast communications. So, I do have access to budget areas that don't come under Public Affairs, but mostly our broadcast communications, which comes under my budget.
And finally, we will turn it over to Ryan, who will help us understand what his role is in creating the budget, and also he will introduce our video.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Ryan Feeley, Director of Finance. What I've been trying to do is make sure that everyone involved in the budget process understands what goes into the budget and how we can think about allocating our resources most efficiently. And the finance team does a lot of work on the back end, making sure that all of these big numbers get slotted into the appropriate thousands of accounts that actually enable the district to run its business on a year-to-year basis. And that's about it. Thank you. I want to thank Sharon and Kim. I don't know if Kim is on the call, but they helped me put this presentation together to give a little bit of an overview, maybe answer some of the more obvious questions that might come up relating to the budget.
I'm sorry. Give me one minute. Let me refresh it.
I'm Ryan Feeley, Director of Finance for the Stanford Public Schools. Before you take part in our budget listening sessions, we wanted to give you an overview of the budget process and some details about the budget that may help guide the discussion. Thank you for taking the time to participate, and thank you for your continued support of the Stanford Public Schools. The operating budget is an estimate of what the Stanford Public Schools will spend next year on the goods and services required to fulfill its mission, which is to provide an education that cultivates productive habits of mind, body, and heart in every student. The operating budget does include funds necessary to maintain current facilities, but it does not cover significant building renovations or the construction of new school buildings. Those are capital projects which are allocated separately. The superintendent's proposed budget is compiled in November and December and is presented to the Board of Education in January. After several weeks of review, the Board of Education votes on the budget in February, and it is sent to the mayor prior to March 1st. In March and April, the Boards of Finance and Representatives have the opportunity to either approve or reduce the proposed budget before it is returned to the Board of Education for final reallocation in May. Those interested in exploring the budget in detail can do so at the finance page of the Stanford Public Schools website, accessible at the link shown. Documents available for review include the multicolored book, which displays the budget organized in three different ways, and the white book, which includes information on enrollment, positions by school, grants, and other items listed here. As I mentioned earlier, the budget can be organized and analyzed in a few different ways. Every account and dollar spent can be related to an object, a program, a function, and a location. Objects like teacher's salary and electricity are system-wide and provide a macro view of spending. Programs, functions, and locations provide details about the distribution of resources within the district. This is a sample of a page in the multicolored budget document, found in the finance section of the Stanford Public Schools website and organized by object. The header, Object 101, Teacher's Salary, denotes the primary organizational dimension of the section. The column to the far left specifies the function, location, and program tied to each line. The columns across display actual and budgeted spending from prior years, as well as the budget progression for the year in question, from superintendent's request through final approval. This is a sample of a page in the white book, found in Section 8, Human Resources. The location, in this case, Hart Magnet School, is found in the upper left. Below the location is a breakdown of enrollment by grade and employee by position for the current year. The tables on the right contain the same data with next year's budgeted figures included. Over the past five years, the average increase to the Board of Education operating budget is 2.28%. Budget increases dating back to 2012 are displayed below, along with the Urban Consumer Price Index increases for each year. Last year's increase of just under 1% was driven by significant economic uncertainty due to COVID-19. And it should be noted that state law effectively prevents certain cities, including Stanford, from reducing the school allocation year over year by tying the disbursement of certain grant funds to that minimum requirement. One way to gauge whether the overall operating budget spend is reasonable is to compare per pupil spending to surrounding districts. As you can see, Stanford is in the middle of PAC for Fairfield County by this measure. The abbreviation NCEP stands for Net Current Expenditures Per Pupil and includes all operating and grant funds. There are a few items which have an outsized impact on the operating budget. There are few items which have an outsized impact on the operating budget each year. These budget drivers include enrollment, class sizes, contracts, health insurance, special education, transportation, maintenance, and program efficiencies. Contrary to trends nationally and in the rest of Connecticut, Stanford's enrollment has grown and continues to grow. Assuming that class sizes remain at around 20 students per class on average, that enrollment growth drives cost increases in many areas of the budget. The object dimension of the budget can be further summarized into major objects. For example, Objects 101 through 123, which all deal with the wages of different employee groups, can be summarized as Object 100, Salaries and Wages. This helps provide a high-level view of how funds are allocated. As you can see, for 2020-21, salaries and wages plus benefits equals over 75% of the total operating budget. When Object 500, which is comprised of transportation costs and out-of-district special education costs, is included, over 90% of the total budget is accounted for. Though the details of the budget change each year, when we view the budget by major object over a five-year term, we can see that the breakdown is very consistent. Barring significant structural changes, we can expect the breakdown for 2021, '22, and beyond to be similar. COVID-19's effects on the school system in every respect cannot be understated. From a financial perspective, COVID caused the district to spend significantly on PPE, plastic barriers, specialty cleaning supplies, and other related items. The cost for these items, as well as other spending necessitated by COVID, has been borne, to this point, by federal grants provided in the CARES Act. For next year, the district must consider the ongoing financial costs of COVID and how to fund them. As to date, no additional federal or state funding has been guaranteed. Thank you again for taking the time to view this presentation and to take part in our listening sessions. If you have additional questions after the listening session, please feel free to email me at the address shown. Thank you.
So now it's your turn. We would love to hear from our staff. And this is your opportunity to spend about two minutes sharing your ideas. We had some people who signed up in advance to speak, but we have an hour and a half set aside to listen to your ideas. And so if you would like to speak and you did not sign up in advance, please raise your hand and Jen Gonzalez will move you over when it's your turn to speak. So, I will turn it over to Jen at this time, and we are ready to listen.
Okay, our first person who signed up is Carolyn Daher. Carolyn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to express gratitude for the support from downtown this year. As when you cut the schools' budgets, of course, the arts were slightly cut and ever so slightly, it's thousands of dollars sometimes. And downtown, when we needed things to support the learning for the students, it was supported. Thank you, Amy Baldotti, and thank you, Mr. Feely, today for answering my question so quickly. I was, I actually walked in the door about 4:20, so I was going to read all this, but I have decided just to shorten and just, just to keep the support of the arts. The kids are just wonderful. And when you hear them talk in the classroom during the hybrid, when you actually have them in there working with material, whether they're in class or at home, it is pretty amazing. I, in fact, had to stop and let them talk within themselves. They miss each other. And the arts support all of that. The art education inspires, positively impacts, students' learning. And when integrated, provides pathways for learning that transcends disciplines' boundaries. It's multidisciplinary, interdisciplinary, and transdisciplinary. But it does take money to support the arts. And I would like just to express that we'd like you to continue supporting that. And I know how hard it is, especially, you know, we see them cleaning. The custodians are working so hard cleaning, and we know how much that costs. And we know how much we cost. And we, you know, we all are appreciative of your hard work, keeping it all together. And thank you very much. And that's what I'd like to say, just to keep supporting us and try not to cut us anymore. And thank you for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thanks for going first. That's never easy to do.
The next person is Deborah Forlatti.
Hello. I hope everyone can hear me okay. If not, please let me know. My name's Deborah Forlatti, and I'm a teacher, an art teacher at West Hill High School. And I'm also the Content Leader for Visual Arts for the District. And I was looking at the budget, and I did see that art was cut. And, and I want to reiterate before I say this, what Carolyn just said, in that we really appreciate how supportive the district has been of the arts. And, and we recognize that you recognize how important they are. But now that I've said that, I would like to say that I noticed that the budget for art was cut by $80,000 from what it was in 2018. And, and that's a pretty large cut, considering that in the fall, we'll be facing some, some big increases in our expenses because we have to change the way we order materials because of COVID. And instead of ordering the less expensive bulk items, we're going to have to order the significantly more expensive individual items in order to reduce the spread of infection. And that's going to increase our expenses and reduce the amount of materials we can provide for students. So, I'm asking that you, if you could reconsider that amount that it was cut. The other, the other thing that I wanted to discuss was the curriculum. Our very kindly, some funds have been allocated for the curriculum. But the last time the curriculum was revised was in 2008, and it was underfunded. The work was underfunded and it was never completed. So, we've been operating for 12 years with an outdated, incomplete curriculum. And it really needs to be revised and properly funded. So, I'm hoping that some funds can be allocated to make sure that it gets done. National Visual Arts standards changed in 2014. We need to update the curriculum to align with those standards and bring it into the 21st century. It needs pacing guides. It needs a great deal of work. And we need about twice what we've been given to, in order to get that work done. So, I'm asking that you allocate some money for that work because it's really important. And, okay, that's all I have to say. And again, thank you again for your support of the arts. And have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Michael Rinaldi.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very, very much for the opportunity to share some of my thoughts regarding our Board of Education budget. My name is Michael Rinaldi, and I'm the very proud principal of West Hill High School. Certainly, there is no doubt that money going forward will continue to be very tight for our entire district. And considerations need to be made for all of our schools, with ultimately tough choices needed to be made on the horizon. That understood and said, however, I would like to make the case for reinstating funding regarding two very critical positions in our high school. Specifically, three school counselor positions, as well as three security positions. Our school counselors serve an incredibly important role in the four-year high school career of our students. Course selection, letters of recommendation, the college admissions process, and often just helping with very serious personal issues are just some, just some of the very important services our counselors provide for our students on a daily basis. Safety and security is every school's top priority. With over 2,300 students and over 200, or close to 200 faculty and staff, our security officers serve an undeniably vital role for everyone's safety at our school. So, thank you for this opportunity. And I think it's wonderful that we're doing this. And I think it's particular, I think it's wonderful that our students have an opportunity to participate in this tomorrow. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Lisa Armstrong raising her hand. Lisa, can you hear me? She's not unmuting. Let me move on to someone else. Maybe we can come back to her. Let's see, I have someone, their name is T. Bass. Can you please state your first name? They're not saying anything either. Those were the only two people who had their hand raised. Neither one are unmuting. Does anyone else want to speak? You can raise your hand. Hey Jen, maybe you might want to just explain to people how to raise their hand in case they don't know on this particular interface. On attendees, I don't know if they have to click their name and click more. There should be an option to raise your hand. No one's raising.
What about the two who had their hand raised? Or is there any way that they can go in and come back out, call? Are there any other options, Jen?
Well, Lisa, it looks like Lisa Armstrong logged off the meeting, and so did the other person.
So, this is the opportunity. I know too often we wait until the budget is complete or sometimes until there are major cuts made to the budget, and then hard decisions have to be made. And so, sharing your ideas at this time is probably a better idea. So, we would love to hear from you. So, we'll, oh, so I see a hand just raised.
Yes, let me move them over.
Hopefully, you'll be able to unmute this person.
Dee Mackey, would you be able to state your first name, please?
Could you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Yes, Jersey and Mackey. Hi, how are you?
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for, for listening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am the Department Head for Career and Technology Education at Stanford High School. And I am also the Content Leader for Career and Technology Education for the District. I just want to say that as far as twofold, I know that I utilize the Perkins Funds on a regular basis. And I try to optimize everything that I request through Perkins so that this way, I am leaving funds on the table for other departments. And I have done that consistently for the past six years as Department Head. And I realize, coming from a finance background, I realize the importance of the utilization of funds and how the budget process operates. So, I do appreciate that. And I continue this year to try to utilize the Perkins Funds. But I do find that my, my funding, my budget funds for the school have decreased year after year after year. And that covers some of the funding, that covers the culinary and child development. So, Perkins will not cover some of the additional funding. And I do need a minimum, at least a minimum dollar amount to provide what is needed. That is not covered by Perkins. So, you know, a couple of years ago, we went through and we improved the kitchen. And we spent, we had a large capital expenditure for improvement of the area in the kitchens, et cetera. But now I do need those items that are not covered under Perkins to continue. So that this way, we have a well-functioning culinary program, child development program, et cetera, for Stanford High School. So, I just asked, we really have, we're cut to the minimum as far as our, our budget. And I do try my hardest to get in excess of hundreds of thousands of dollars from Perkins for our needs, so that this way it opens up funds for other areas. So, I ask you to continue to consider the Career and Technology Education and the fact that we both, at Stanford High, at AITE, and at West Hill High School, we're trying to utilize those Perkins Funds to the utmost efficiency. So, we're really trying to work with you, and I appreciate you working with us to try to keep at least the minimum amount that we need in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have somebody by the name of T. Bass. Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you.
I am in that department. I think my Department Head for speaking on our behalf. However, I do have a suggestion that's kind of different. I suggest, because I have been doing summer school for the last six to eight years, students who attend summer school for free or free and reduced lunch should be a candidate for community service hours at various schools during the summer, whether it's filing, answering the telephone, assisting the custodians, the secretary, et cetera. But I think it would be great for them to be held accountable for government funds that pay for their education. And I've thought this out for the years because a lot of them take it for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, there was Peter and Sandra Carlton.
Hi, this is Sandra Carlton. I'm the Assistant Principal at Strawberry Hill School. I actually have a question. In the past, it has always been encouraged as a member of the staff at Stanford Public Schools, as well as a parent and community member, to come out to, whether it be the Board of Finance or Board of Rep meetings, to support the school budget. Is that something, what else can we do this year to help make sure that the city is behind the proposal that Dr. Lucero and our team puts together?
So, Sandra, you just took my speech at the end.
Oh, sorry.
But you can give it for me if you'd like.
I can hold on and wait. I just want to make sure that everybody.
I think you bring up a really good point. And my notes here say that we. I think you bring up a really good point. And my notes here say that we really need to, it can't, when there are Board of Reps and Board meetings and the only people who show up are in front of you right now, it makes it seem like we're the only ones who want to support the budget. And I think we did a really good job last year. The Board of Finance was really impressed by the amount of people who came out and spoke about the budget. And so, it's really important that through the process of walking us through the budget, through the mayor's office and then to the Board of Finance and the Board of Reps, that we all are putting our ideas out, that how much we support the budget. I'm always intrigued by the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and Board of Reps, how few people come out and speak once, in support of the Board of Ed budget. You hear people come out all the time to talk about things like the library, which are absolutely wonderful. We want people to do that. The bookmobile, there was one year that everyone came out and spoke about how important it is to have a new bookmobile. And look, they have a new bookmobile. So, it's really important that we have a voice in that process also. And usually, we may have fifteen or sixteen speakers at that meeting and then it ends and that's the end of it. So, there are a lot of other opportunities to come out and speak as Sandra has pointed out to us. Sandra, did I miss anything that I should be saying about getting out there? Maybe writing to your Board of Reps and Board of Finance members so that they have a clear understanding that you are truly in support of the budget. This is a great year. We should use COVID as an opportunity for a lot of people to join the meetings because you can, you can join from your house. So, that would be a really important part of walking through the budget and understanding the budget process. Sandra, how did I do?
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. Now, I will make sure also to publicize those dates and links to the meetings so that we can have our, our families and staff attend those. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see Lisa Armstrong came back on for a minute and then?
Did see her. I'm going to try to move her over one more time.
And if there's anyone else out there, there's a hundred and eight of you all watching this. So, we would love to hear from you. So, please raise your hand.
Hi all, I apologize that I raised my hand.
There she is.
Once I thought I'd unmute to make that clear. But hello.
Hello.
Nice to see everyone. That's it.
That's all, Lisa?
That's it. I really did not mean to raise my hand.
Oh, well, we went through a lot to, to get you.
I heard, I heard. I think you just wanted to see my bit emoji.
Well, I, I love that, but I miss you being next door to me. It's nice to hear your voice. I hope things are going well at Stark.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Take care. Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else out there? Oh, here, I think we have another hand raised.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer. I am from Building One Community. And I don't know if I'm misspeaking right now because I can see that everyone that's talking is a staff member. But I was invited to talk, so here I am. I just want to say that since you guys are thinking about the budget and want to echo Mr. Rinaldi's voice on counselors, there's a lot of, a lot of the children are facing a lot of anxiety, not only at the high school level, but elementary and middle school as well. And I want to say that this is the time to think of parents as an asset. And what they're needing right now is workshops to be able to support their children. The videos that you guys are putting up are great and they are helpful, but there's a majority of parents that are being untapped. They're not, that message is not really being received by them. So, if there's any way that in your budget, you can have someone start doing workshops and more counselors to support children right now because they're, they're hurting right now. They're emotional and, you know, and their heart is, it's not a good feeling that they're having.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next, I saw someone raise their hand, but their name is Under Still Meadow. Would you be able to state your name for us, please?
Yes, this is Angela Osaro, principal at Still Meadow. And I really just participated to listen. But being that there is time allotted, I thought I would just again raise the, the thought around the concern that many administrators have brought to light in regard to the additional work related to special education and the loss of the IEP compliance role. And just, you know, again, bringing to light problem solving in that area, the, the possible idea of restructuring of the administrative team. And really, with the amount of time and energy that the district has spent on professional development and really supporting expertise in the building of special education, that role really does support a special education administrator. In many cases in our buildings, people are devoting, you know, honestly, three full days and lots of hours at home to that role. And there is so much other work that has to happen in, in our school buildings in terms of instructional leadership, administrative teams being able to participate in, in all of the committees, engagement, attendance, safety, instructional data teams, grade levels. And, you know, I would just hate for us to be at a place where if we're, if we're not resolving this issue, a lot of the work on the administration level becomes reactionary rather than really continuing development, continuing visions in our schools. So, again, just bringing that up to see if, if there is any thoughts in the budget going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else have, want to speak? Okay. Well, we have Mike Revillas.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hey, sorry about that. First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for taking the time to fill this call. I was not prepared to speak really, but given the opportunity, I'd love to. I'm, I'm actually out walking my dog right now. So, if you hear him barking, I apologize. My, my question, and I guess it's a question or a comment, is first of all, to, to take a step back, the custodians in our building and all the buildings have done an incredible job this year with COVID. I think that what they're being asked to do, like everyone is above and beyond, but they have really overdelivered and, and we see how, how hard they're working. And I know for West Hill that the building has really never been cleaner and those guys are really, really working hard. My question is regarding the fields. The Board of Ed fields are still under their jurisdiction for maintenance. And a lot of times, they're so busy in the building that care of the field becomes secondary or takes a back burner, which as we know affects our athletics program greatly. My question is, is it possible to have the city parks and rec department work on the fields? I do know that there are many people in that department who have masters in turf and lawn care management. And they've often, often asked to take care of the fields, but are denied that privilege. Could any of you shed any light on that? And thank you for listening.
Well, we will take that back. We want to take the time to listen to you all tonight, Mike. So, we'll take that information back with us.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Raise your hand. I don't see anyone else. Time out.
Up there's one now.
Oh, look at that.
Just when you think it's over.
Yes, so that is Mark Bonacera.
Hello, everybody. This is Mark Bonacera, principal of Roxbury School. Just wanted to put support to what Angela Osaro said. I'd also like to talk about our amazing parent facilitators. We are hoping that the parent facilitator position could become full-time. And also in favor of adding back kindergarten power educators who were cut, that were reduced for this year as well as the media power educator. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
We have T. Bass raising her hand again. Let me move her over.
Thank you for taking my call. Listen, um, as my department head, Ms. Mackey spoke, the kitchen is beaming. It's brand new. Hands-on is where all the jobs are. We're training students in our kitchens to go out and get jobs immediately. After they take four courses from us, they can go out and get jobs in restaurants. That has been happening and we want to continue that. Also, with the child development study, the students are getting trained so that they can go out and work in the childcare centers here in Stanford. So, these are opportunities for our students to get in on experience and be able to be certified with a certificate to go out and get jobs. It's very important. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, there we go.
Charmaine Davis. Charmaine, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I would just like to chime in. I also was not prepared to speak tonight at all. But I would love to chime in and just ask that we consider this not to fund something new or not cut. I am just asking that we celebrate the restructuring of some funding this year that went to creating the technology leader positions in the schools. I know a big part of that was to help with the major shifts that arose out of our need for COVID supports and relief. But I will say that I think so many needs have been met as a result of those positions. I think it was a smart move and a very 21st century effort. And I would hope that we can continue that and maybe even strengthen that, that set of supports. I would also like to echo the need to fund support for IEP compliance. I know my colleagues are in agreement on that, in that vein. I know it's been stated, so I won't take too much time on that. But we are really struggling to balance supports in the building from, from an administrative perspective because of the amount of time it's taking away. I think everyone is pretty well aware of that. I just hope we can work together to come up with the solution that, that really is helpful and supportive of our students and their families and our staff who are working harder than ever. And I'm just concerned about items we may be missing or overlooking as a result. So, I hope we can really focus on that. And I would also like to echo the need to make our parent facilitator positions full-time. Thank you so much for your time. I have been in this district a long time and I've never seen this opportunity to openly come to the cabinet and share our ideas and thoughts about the budget. So, I want to thank you all for making this possible.
Well, this person who's been in the district so long, we don't recognize your name, Charmaine.
I don't know. I wasn't trying to hide behind my moniker there, but I couldn't get, I don't know what's going on with my camera. But hello, everyone. I just, again, didn't plan on speaking at all. I just wanted to, I wanted to just speak up because of some of the things that have been shared and just to say thank you. And yeah, that's me. I'm still Charmaine.
Thank you, Dr. Lucero. Is there, oh, we've got another hand raised. Here we go. We're moving right along now.
So, I have Kathy Wonder. Hi Kathy, can you hear me?
Hello, everyone. Quite a fascinating panel and very informative, Ryan. You did a great job with the presentation. Just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said. I'll be leaving, retiring in June, as most of you know. And while this budget won't impact me directly, I would be remiss if I did not share my two cents worth in leaving and making sure that Westover is in a good place because it's very near and dear to my heart. And I do have to admit, while Westovers has some unique situations with moving out and back in and with mold-related and moisture, I still do feel very, very strongly that while I have a very dedicated and hard-working assistant principal who is managing all of our sped meetings and sped services, it is a job in and of itself. And it, I, I just, I have to say that we need help and support there. It's, it's just too much. And I, I appreciate, Mike, you did so much to try to make it work and put so much time and energy and effort into it. And that doesn't go unnoticed, but I do believe that we really very seriously need to look at that and leave us in a better place for next year than we have been because it's just way too much on a building. And it really does distract from the real reason why we are all in this and why, why, why we, why we are leaders and takes away from what we really want to do, which is be instructional leaders in our building and move kids to where they need to go instructionally. So, that's my two cents worth. And of course, you know, our parent facilitator position is also something that, if, if it can be figured out, that, that is a very, very much-needed position. That we actually, in both of those things, have wanted so badly that we have been willing and are still willing, moving forward, to use building funds or Title I funds or any funds that we can find to help support both of those positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have Beth Gillan.
Good evening, everyone. This is Beth Gillan. I'm the longtime English department head over at Stanford High School. And I do appreciate the opportunity to share a quick thought with you. Amy, you and I spoke about this earlier on in the year, but I did want to bring up once again that in English language arts at the secondary level, for many years, we had a very, very positive, productive relationship with our curriculum associate, TOSA. And our budget cuts have put us in a position this year where we are functioning. Everything is on hold. Our assessments are on hold. Many of the things that we work so closely with our curriculum associate with are on hold. But while many other subject areas do have their content leaders, English and the other core areas have been left with no point person because of the cuts of our curriculum associates. I believe that that is a, a really, really important role within our curriculum and instruction. And I would love any consideration that you give to restoring our core areas with a point person who can help us, school-based people like me, work together as we have successfully for many years. And to essentially continue to move forward with many of the plans that we have on hold in secondary English, specifically at the high school level. Because we have great things that are just in a complete holding pattern now. And I believe the best way for us to move forward is to consider restoring curriculum associate for English. Thanks. And congratulations, Charmaine. Thanks, and congratulations, Charmaine.
Okay, we, I have Jenny Ganepa.
Okay, good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to thank to everybody for all the support you're giving us, all the effort you are doing to help our families and our kids in, especially in this learning distance model. But I'd like to also second the words Dr. Bonacera said about the parent facilitators full-time, because especially in this time, along these months, we really need that time, because most of the parents work until late hours, sometime, sometimes 10, 12 hours. And for us, it is very difficult to, to communicate with the parent facilitators when they have only four hours during the day. And if you consider it, if you kindly consider it, the full-time can be a little, a little better for all of us, because the parents facilitators sometimes is the bridge to communicate parents with the people from the school, for the staff, and also for the district. I really, really appreciate if you can hear our voices, because I'm a parent, and I feel I'm not the only one that feels in this way. And I said again, thank you for all you're doing along these months, but we need a little more. I hope so you can help us to be considered in this budget. Thank you so much. Right now, to let you know, only I'm hiding in my job, but I have to take the chance to talk a few minutes in this session, because I know it's very important. And also, apologize, because, because I tried to do my best. English is not my first language, but it's a challenge also for us. But we have to do it. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen. Thanks. Have a good night.
Okay. I think that's all we have so far, unless anyone else wants to raise their hand. Okay.
So, see, no more hands raised. I really appreciate you taking the time to come out tonight, not only to the people who came to speak, but also for those who came to listen. We will be hosting two more sessions this week. Tomorrow night, we will host one that will focus on students. And then on Thursday, there will be a session for families and community members to speak. If for some reason you did not have a chance to speak tonight, and you think of something before Thursday, please feel free to join us that evening. You can send your, you can contact Jen Gonzalez. She will help you get registered in advance to speak. But thank you so much for taking your time. I really, truly appreciate it. I should say, we really, truly appreciate it. And we look forward to you walking through the budget season with us for the next few months. Have a wonderful evening, and we will see you soon. Take care.